You're good to go? Are we okay? Okay. Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of March twenty second, two thousand and twenty three. You call the meeting to order. And the first thing on our agenda is to approve tonight's agenda, and I do have a few changes on here. Under superintendent's update, we will not have any district updates because our superintendent team and assistant superintendent team are unable to be with us tonight. We will then also move up on the agenda after the presentation by our consolidated facilities director will move up the school building committee report next on there. And to delete from the agenda, the chairs report appropriation item that will be removed. Removing under the policy report, removing first reading of policy KBD. That's still a work in progress. And I think that's it for what I have. Any other changes, deletions? Yep. Okay, very good. So we will move on. And next thing on our agenda is presentation by Director of Consolidated Facilities, Bill Ritchie. Bill, welcome. And come on up. I will.
Good. Thank you for having me. So you know, let me get a little, a little put together a small little PowerPoint just to kind of we have with consolidated facilities and some of the slides are older, but just, you know, there's a lot of people still ask me after this is what is consolidated facilities? So it's like it kind of rehash what it is and I'll highlight some of the the things that we're trying to accomplish and some of the the goals maybe in the future. So the next slide if you want. So basically, on the town side, everybody on the town side had to come up with a mission statement. So mission consolidating facilities is to provide professional facilities management and services to all town buildings in the planning, construction, renovation and maintenance and cleaning operations in the most cost effective way possible to promote a safe and clean, well maintained environment. That was developed by me about two thousand and eleven. And these are some of the responsibilities consolidated facilities. So the portfolio consists of about twenty five buildings, about nine hundred forty five thousand square feet of space. There's six school buildings, the town hall, the library, the orders, three firehouses, a chemical building, the kid a library, the Milton Arts Center, the Milton Comfort Aging Animal Shelter, the Norton Yard Club, and seven buildings at the DPW, and then Sturridge Building, Sis Pump Station, Charlestown and some property at the government building area. So it's a big, it's a pretty large portfolio. Next slide, please. And these are some of the areas of responsibility for consolidated facilities. And it's a, it's a constant changing thing, but these are the big highlights is facilities management, engineering, a lot of capital projects, along with planning, project management, preventative maintenance, energy consumption, life safety inspections, and some of the regulations, the border health, the public labor services, custodial care, building security, procurement, landscaping, snow and ice removal. And this is just kind of broken up on the school side and the town side, but you know, basically my direct and indirect supervision with custodians is five senior building custodians, roughly twenty two junior custodians, and in the summertime, we can hire up to fifteen additional staff, senior staff to help us with grounds and cleaning the buildings. On the town staff, we have two administrators, myself and Bob Mayu, administrative assistant, four licensed craftsmen, and there is electrician, heating, two licensed carpenters, electrician and a heating ventilation tech, two maintenance craftsmen, a maintenance painter, and a general maintenance person. And back in two thousand and twelve, we started a web based work order system. One of the biggest things with consolidated, so there was no records of things during maintenance. So this, this program is called School Dude. It's a unique game. It's, it's, it's changed the last few years, but I had to break, we track everything. So since two thousand and twelve, we completed over eighteen thousand work orders. And those workers, we range from anywhere from a one hour job to a fifteen hour job. We did over thirty two hundred preventative maintenance inspections. Currently, we have about a hundred and forty, hundred fifty work orders that are still open, and we anticipate about fifty hundred work orders each and every and another, and another thing about the work order is they're all tracked. So a teacher or a village principal sent a work order. It could be a plumbing work order, heating ventilation work order. We track them. We track the materials. We track the labor. There'll be a good snapshot of what's actually happening day to day. This is just how, this is, this is the, the complexity of the work order system tells you what's in progress and how many are open, how many closed. That was done probably a month ago. So that's the thing with the record system. And these are, this, this slide here just tells you what, what we do with, as far as inspections, you know, with fiber arms, sprinkler systems, oilers, rooftop units, water system, generators, elevators. I can go on and on, but these are all the things that we oversee with drinking water, testing, sampling, auto timing, rigging, fire curtains, playgrounds, equipment, engineering, field house equipment. There's a lot of inspections that go on behind the scene that normally not. So in the capital projects, so last year, for year twenty three, we submitted thirteen capital projects. But due to limited funding, we only received two projects that were approved. And that was at the Milton High School, the theatrical lighting. That's phase two. We did two, last year we did one phase. This is the second phase. We're about ninety two percent completed on that project. And then Callie Cochrane, it's bidirectional antennas, and what that is, is it's cabling above the ceiling. So police and fire, in case of emergency, they can communicate on their walkie talkies. When you have big structures with a lot of steel and concrete, they can't speak to one another. So all the, all the bigger buildings have a bidirectional antenna. It was happening. So this is just a software upgrade. The system would be about two hundred thousand dollars installed, but the software is now twelve years old. It's failing and you can't get parts. So that was a real big thing. But you know, the next slide will tell you a little bit more of the story going forward. So this year, for year twenty four, for another thirteen projects. Some of these things are carried over from last year, but you know, more by, by directional antennas at the high school piers, the basketball court upgrade, you know, windows, just like carpeting. I needed, we need a new maintenance man, ongoing heated ventilation improvements, flooring, paving, exterior doors, hardware, mason room peers, playground equipment, and education space improvements, you know, so these are things. This year looks a little bit more promising than last year. But we have to have, right now it's going to the board, the select board in the wild committee for final improvement. I didn't want to say what we did yet, but we did get a lot of these so far. And then this next slide, I actually developed that right after, you know, kind of update. So, you know, so I wanted to be nice to kind of look at since I started. What, what actually we did, we did do. So since two thousand and twelve, over forty six major capital projects were and then the funding since two thousand and twelve, just on the school side, we received, you know, a little over five million dollars in capital projects. And then I broke them down. Where did we put the money? So roofing and ductwork projects like one point seven million, paving about nine hundred thousand, building security enhancements, about eight hundred thousand, lighting projects at the archery pierce, about six hundred thousand. You know, misleading flooring tile windows and painting, we spent about a little more than half a million. Building track improvements, about two hundred twenty five thousand, rooftop upgrades, about two hundred thousand, classroom space upgrades, fixtures about hundred sixty, and then facilities equipment and the baby was about hundred thirty. So it's, you know, it's, it's when you, it's, it's a lot when you look at it, but when you look at the value of our property, we probably have about four hundred million dollars in property in town to make cash. So it's not a big capital budget, but it's the best that we can do with the funding that we have. So that's where we spent the money. This is probably my best slide and my one that I kind of take with me to the world of pride and green communities update. So we became a green community in two thousand and ten, and the goal of that was to maintain about a twenty percent energy reduction for the town. And we actually did that. We've maintained a twenty percent reduction. And we completed since two thousand and six, fifty nine energy projects. Since two thousand and ten, green communities, we received just over a million dollars in green communities funding. Another three hundred thirty thousand with, you know, ever source and national grid utilities. Did a project about four years ago, illuminate mass, we received about three hundred fifteen thousand dollars, and that was changing out horrible light bulbs in every classroom, about sixteen thousand light bulbs. We had, you know, some thirty two watt light bulb, the LED technology. Other projects over the years since two thousand and six, about two hundred fifty thousand. And then all totals, what I keep, go back and document about twenty six, since two thousand and six, over two million dollars in energy upgrades and free funding. And that does not include what we're saving every year, about four hundred thousand dollars a year we're saving going forward with all the energy upgrades. We've done extremely well as a, as a green community. And then future goals for consolidated facilities, you know, I want to continue with the department's charge, you know, to, you know, seek, seek more grants, seek to refunding. There's, there's some, so some solar opportunity, EV charging stations, huge oil upgrades and more lighting. Investigate more opportunities to continue to consolidate for further collaboration. I work very closely with the DPW right now. We have a really good relationship. They do a lot of things for us. We do a lot of things for them. I think we can do a better job with further, you know, consideration, looking at the parks departments, other things like that, but that's going to have to be negotiated. But you know, and additional facility staff, if we don't consolidate, if we don't find better ways to do it, then we will have to go out in the future for licensed plumber and landscape support, because I'm using a lot of my staff to do landscape report where we should really be doing roof will repair the windows and not bend that kind of land. But there's a lot of land and a lot of, you know, a lot of mulching and repelling, but that's what we have to do. And then eventually acquire adequate space to accommodate our staff, our efficiency. We don't really have a full maintenance shop. We work with the DPW. We did a study about seven years ago. It was thirty five million dollars to do a whole new DPW. Consolidated facilities would be in there, but it's, it's not, not high in all this. It's not something that people really want, you know, thirty five million is a lot of them. So just that's one of the, but that's things that have to happen down the line. And then my, my last slide. Just closing remarks and, you know, lastly, you know, we have a great department. But, you know, obviously it takes a lot of staff, department heads, supporters committees, that work closely with, you know, to continue with the mission and kind of go forward. So it's, you know, and it's teamwork, you know, teamwork from everywhere. It's not me, the department, it's everyone. But I, you know, you know, really have to stress that I'm the only department in town that's consolidated. I think we can do more consolidation. I don't want to keep going back to taxpayer and asking for three more people. I think it's people in town who put together and save a lot of money, try to do it in-house and keep adding more money and building the staff. So hopefully somewhere down the line, we'll continue to consolidate because it's just trying to hire a licensed plumber to take probably a hundred thousand dollars. Then you put them on the books with health insurance. So it's a hundred fifty thousand dollar lifetime, lifetime for benefits of that. So I think it might be an opportunity that we can keep doing it, but it's, you know, the big, it's hard. It's not, we're with a lot of unions and change is, is difficult for some people. But I can always say to people, change is the only constant thing in life. We change every single second. I mean, so it should be easy, but it's not. But that's really it. And, you know, I didn't kind of, you know, there was, you know, obviously one of the things I wanted to talk about, just not to care was we did have a massive flood leak in one of the school buildings and very unfortunate, I did not want that. That was the last thing I wanted. Before I retired, but you know, they thought I was on the job and I was got there quick and we put it together. About a day, I, even April thirtieth, I'm hoping to get the keys back, those classrooms to be all done. So Santos, we had, somebody had walked through that building an hour before that. I mean, we had, you know, all week long, we had building checks, but it's one of the things that happened above the ceiling. But I found somebody to kind of solve this. Hopefully for the future, that will happen in that area. You never know what's above the ceiling. It was a cold day and
That was, yeah.
Below zero and everybody had issues, but not the issue I wanted. I did not want that. It's really, really funny. And so any, if you have any questions or, I mean.
Thank you, Bill. And any questions, Conley?
I have, I have a a bill that I remember back when you worked just for the schools before consolidated data facilities became a reality. And when I think of consolidated facilities, I see, I see you. And, you know, that, that's my vision of consolidated facilities. And it's been a very, it's been a real pleasure to work with you and to collaborate with you over the years. And, you know, I just want to tell you that I think that even when I was on the Warren Committee, people were asking how they could get more money to you. So because they were so impressed with the work that you did and how much you got accomplished. And, you know, when I think about you, I think about how easily you transitioned from working for the schools to working for the entire town and just everybody, you know, working together so collaboratively with everybody. I always think that you can solve anything, fix anything, and you can anticipate the needs of the, of the town. And I especially want to tell you that during the pandemic, you know, your work and leadership at that time with ventilation systems and cleaning of the buildings was just beyond, just beyond anything I could even imagine. But you worked so, so hard. And, you know, you are really a treasure and I will miss you. I will miss you, but I wish you the best as you go to the next chapter of your life. And I'll tell you, retirement is lovely. So you're going to enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just thank you very much.
Yeah.
And it's, yeah, I think you're, the legacy is something that we can try to build on, and I'm sure it will be impossible or very difficult to find a replacement for you. But thanks for sharing this overview of everything that you've contributed. And I actually didn't realize the extent of the green community's work. That's really exciting. And to think of like the EV charging stations and like even more things we can bring in is, it's really, that's, that's great. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I would just echo that. I mean, it's fantastic to, you know, just get your comprehensive overview here, everything that's been accomplished. And I think, you know, as I think forward, we just, obviously you, you have a legacy. You've established something really, really great and to keep continuing to building on on your foresight and your work. So thank you so much for your commitment and I wish you all the best.
Well, you know, it's funny, I was talking to Bob Mayu, Operation Manager, and I was, over the years, trying to match me and I hired him. I hired him on my last job. When I came to Milton, he stayed at the other job and then, but I had the opportunity to start as all the facilities. I says, I'm looking for somebody that's good. And we have always, I said, I'm me, I'm gonna give him a call. And I took him from here from my other job, and I was hoping that he wanted to go forward, but he just, he loves operations. He likes to hand on stuff and he did that. And I don't want to let me, to me. You know, he's so valuable in that position, which is much, I mean, a lot, a lot of pride. And I, you know, when I started here, you know, in two thousand, I treated this job like it was my own company. I had my own business for ten years, many years ago. And I think that's why I've been, I feel I've been very successful because I took it like my own business. Consolidated facilities was my own business. And I, you know, I came to schools and I wanted to maintain them. And so my, my heart's in the job. And, you know, and hopefully the next person or the hat in the job. I think all successful people have their hat in the job. You don't have your hat in the job, you can't be successful. And I think that's so important. And I think that's, you know, that is my legacy. My heart was in the job for twenty three years. And so I think it's why I have a lot of friends and everyone, you know, said, Bill, thanks, you know, you know, so I, I feel good about that.
And as you should. Now, yeah, we all, we certainly all feel that way. And, and just wanted to say, you know, you've really been the go to guy for everything, facilities for over twenty years for our town and for our schools. And I've always appreciated your willingness to pitch in on everything that came your way. You know, expected and unexpected is as recently as this flood, but is, you know, going back to, you know, twenty five years of many unexpected occurrences, but you've always been available with kindness and with thoughtfulness to answer too many facilities related questions to count. You've explored alternative options for school buildings that we, as we studied and continued, you know, countless, looking at countless options. You've constructed multiple new classrooms where no classrooms were before. You became an expert and a guide on cleaning, sanitizing and ventilation protocols during COVID. And many, many more. So I also want to thank you on behalf of all of us to express our sincere gratitude for your years of service and all you've done for the schools in the town of Milton. I've also taken the liberty of inviting a guest speaker here tonight who was part of your time in here in Milton. And I'd like to invite Tony Chikala up to join you at the microphone by May.
Well, thanks very much. I'm Tony Chikala. For those that don't know, I was vice chair and chair of the school building committee and chair of the consolidated facilities committee. So I've known Bill for more than, you know, twenty, what is it, twenty, twenty three years? And he does nothing but impress me time after time. I, I think I consider myself a friend of Bill. So but, you know, I think during the building project, Bill was invaluable. If people remember all of the choreography of moving students and furniture and people and teachers and everything from place to place to place as we went through this intricate dance to get the project done, Bill was always there, you know, taking care of the current rules and also a, a, a huge assist on the project that we were doing. He saw the buildings basically get built or rebuilt, and we've had the benefit of that ever since. You know, when we started doing the consolidated facilities department, people said, that's not gonna work. You know, you got schools and you got the town and there's kind of a, you know, are their interests aligned? Will they be able to work together? We were very lucky that we had some, some town leaders, Mary Gormley, Ken Burn, and it's the folks that came together. You know, I remember talking on Shields about, we really got to make this work. And he pushed for that and a whole bunch of people really pushed for that. But it was still a tough job. Bill spent the last dozen years answering to two different bosses. That takes, you know, the consummate politician, but Bill is the politician in the best sense. And, and, but what I really think Bill's experience here in Milton shows is that diligence, competence, an, an ability to just get the job done and a willingness to jump in and do the work. You know, one of the biggest challenges Bill had to start was, we had to get him out of the ditch and, you know, you know, and manage it because his tendency was fix the problem. See a problem, fix a problem. And over the years, you've watched Bill really become the consummate manager of the department as it's grown, but also the confidence builder in the town. Years ago, we used to hear, hear people repeatedly say, what's going on that the schools, well, they're spending all this money on this, that, and the other thing, and they they couldn't take care of the buildings, which, you know, after seventy years or ninety years, it kind of wore out. But, you know, but Bill has been tremendous at, at doing a whole lot with a little. There are so many of the projects that he didn't talk about what he did to do a project in-house and save forty percent by redeploying his, his team to get things done in the summer. And time after time, the Green Schools Initiative, I had no idea he was going to launch that whole thing. And, and look at the huge benefits we're all, you know, getting from that. So I, I could go on forever talking about all the great stuff that Bill's done. I think he's, he's left a great legacy. It's going to take, you know, someone with some real skills and chops to, to take his place. It's a challenging position, but if somebody comes in and works hard, listens, and, and, and it really focuses on solving the problems, they can have a successful tenure like Bill has had. But he really has, has made this department. And, and I have to say, many, many thanks to success beyond, I think, everybody's dreams. So congratulations, good luck on a happy, fulfilling and healthy.
And Bill, thank you, Tony, so much for coming out. And thank you for your foresight and, and pushing for the creation of a consolidated facilities department. You know, it's something like you say, the town has benefited from for many years. And, and Bill, Bill has been the face of that department for, for a long time.
Yeah. And I, I would love to say that, like, like, you know, all you people in the committee, Tony Chikala, you know, you know, Sean back here, you people are volunteers. I get paid for what I do. You share all this stuff to me, I share with you. My heart, you know, you guys volunteer. That's amazing. I mean, so who's to all use also because you show up every night and we can go to the same spots that I go to and not getting paid for it. Yeah, I've known for so long now that, you know, he's like, he's like a close friend. And if I'm ever looking at the selling job, now I know who to hire. He couldn't say, I couldn't say any better than that. You know, I never, I don't like saying goodbye to people, you know, I'll, I'll be around, you know, I mean, so whatever. And who knows? You know, never know what the next, the next opportunity will be, you know, I mean, for, you know, working for talent, you know, and then, you know, and I had a great experience.
Thank you so much, Bill. Just a little something from the committee to thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Such a pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks. Congratulations.
Thanks, Bill. We'll see what facilities.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. So next item on the agenda, we're going to go to the school building committee report. And I also realized that I neglected to mention that we have member Anna Vargese joining with us remotely tonight. She's, she's joining us from home and welcome, Anna. And member Ross Denny was unable to attend tonight, but the rest of us are here. And, and Anna, if you have anything you want to share, just, just raise your hand, let us know and or recognize you. Now, Sean, welcome.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, no, no problem.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sean Warwick. I'm the chair of the school building committee, also a town member of recent date. I just want to give an update and a some further information on our articles for the annual town meeting coming up in May. So if in May, I just got to check with the access to make me present.
Are they in there? Are you in this?
Yeah, I believe so. Just waiting to be promoted.
Knock on the door to just be sure.
So just kind of for recap more for public consumption. So just kind of for recap more for public consumption, you know, the school building committee is made up of nine members. The five at the top are representatives of our designing construction industry, a member of years of experience. At bottom left are two members of this committee, a member White and a member Miranda. And on the bottom right are two members appointed by the select board, Mrs. Zulus and Glenn Hoffman, who are architects. I do want to talk about, you know, the basis for why the need for a school right now. So what you see before you now is kind of grade enrollment across the district at the elementary level from pre-K at the bottom, which is in blue, to fifth grade, which is up at the top. The yellow line that you see there, the yellow dash line that's there is essentially the capacity of the existing elementary schools. As you can see, for a long time, essentially since 2016, we've been operating one grade level above the capacity of our schools. Couple of that overcrowding that we're experiencing now with upcoming, you know, 40B projects that are on the books that everyone knows about. It's, it's gonna further exacerbate that, that problem. So roughly about a year and a half, two years ago, the school building committee came up with an idea of looking at creating an upper middle school here at the high school campus. And by doing so, we essentially address overcrowding at all levels because that, that that overcrowding that we showed there at the elementary school level has also migrated up to the middle school. So for us, the creation of an upper middle school with seventh and eighth grade addresses overcrowding at all levels. First, at the Pierce Middle School level, which currently houses three grades, will reduce it down to two. So that would free up space there. At the elementary school level, we'll be pulling pre-K and fifth grade out of it. The study that was done in 2019 addressed the need for 26 classrooms at the elementary school level. By pulling the pre-K and the fifth grade out of it, we create organically those 26 classrooms without having to redistrict it by creating additional school guarantees. Then finally, the space at the middle school that we create, the high school has administrative space that can get moved over to the middle school, thus creating more space in the high school. Again, addressing all levels from the top. So we look at that and we pull out the fifth grade and the pre-K and present that graph, we're below that capacity level. So for us, we solve the equation. This one is actually a good preface. It's, you know, it's tough following Bill Ritchie, you know, for a presentation, but he's well aware of a lot of these, you know, currently in the district, you have classrooms and gymnasiums. We have stages with classrooms on it with children, you know, sitting on the stage. They don't sit in chairs or desks anymore. They sit on hardwood floors. We have teachers, you know, teaching out of carts. We have children in hallways. Colley-Cutt Cunningham Library, in the corner of the Colley-Cutt Cunningham Library is the second grade classroom that you see here, that we're all well aware of. And then essentially on the other side of the hall, library is an office space for teachers. And essentially what they did is squish down the library space that was there. Actually, I had a parent the other night telling me his kid can't get a book out of life because it's not there. So as Mr. Ritchie talked about, recently, there was a pipe burst that happened during the cold step that were happening. It took out two classrooms. Typically, in, in a typical school, there'd be space to kind of rearrange and do stuff. There is no space. So what happens? The teacher's conference room is now on the stage of the Colley-Cutt Cunningham Library, essentially behind the curtain where the kids read, not really good professional space. That library that I just showed in that middle area that gets squished down is now a classroom. It's a kindergarten classroom up there. So currently in the Colley-Cutt Cunningham Library, there are three classrooms. The second grade classroom they showed, this kindergarten classroom, and then behind it is essentially a conference room that got converted to a classroom. So there's a great term, I'm sure everybody on this board is very aware of, of educational excellence that you hear about. With the funding mechanism that we have as a town, which we all admit is tough to do based on our, our tax structure, and then couple that with overcrowded facilities, I have no idea how we're ever gonna achieve educational excellence. The funding portion of it is a school committee issue that you guys are dealing with greatly. The overcrowding is my issue and that's what I'm trying to do. But you couple the both of them together, there is no way we're achieving educational excellence. So for site selection, is this committee is aware, we had a, a motion last year, an article for a town meeting, where we looked at conservation land along Gao Road. Parcel D six, five, six, A, also known as the Lamb Estate. Last year, we were taking that entire portion on the right side of Gao Road to convert for a school. We had all the, all the agreements. We had all the votes going into town meeting. We voluntarily pulled that back to address concerns of consistent constituents around the town. First, we pulled back the project 300 feet off, off Blue Hills Parkway. What that does is, we see there is a heat map of the ecological valuable portion of the site. So I walked the site personally with the state forester. His educational portion to me, I, I, I don't understand this stuff sometimes, so I refer to them. He told me the first 300 feet of the site accounts for roughly eighty percent of the ecological valuable portion of the site. So what I said is, if there's a way that we can cut back and save that, I'm all for it. And to do that, this is kind of where we came to. Additionally, we looked at creating a buffer zone next to our neighbors at Home Inc. So we did that. And then we also created additional, well, not created, but left conservation land up at the top. So by doing so, this is essentially our new parcel that we're looking at here. We merged a smaller portion of the conservation land, four acres less than what we were using last year, with a portion of the park parcel that was across Gao Road. Again, that park parcel was less ecologically valuable. So we're using the, the least ecologically valuable portions of sites around here. By doing so, you know, we're using a third of the overall conservation land, 2.8 acres, essentially less than three acres. Last year, we're at 6.8 acres, much higher number. We did that by merging it with a smaller portion of the parks land, again, that has a lower ecological value. Last year, again, we had votes of every committee going forward, going into town meeting. This was what we were committing on last year, utilizing all 6.8 acres of parcel last year. And then this year, we've reduced that. And we're working with an architect right now to develop plans on that stuff to present similar conceptual drawings that you saw there. I'm hoping to have the first set of these tomorrow. Part of that, part of the reason we were doing this too, wasn't just to save the ecological valuable portion of the site, was also to address our concerns of our neighbors, which we're well aware of at Home Inc. and also at Pine Tree Grove. But the visual impact of having the boundary right up against Home Inc. was one of, you know, valid concerns. So what we did is we created a buffer zone there, a 50-foot of conservation land. And inherently, at that boundary of the conservation land is a 50-foot zoning buffer, essentially creating a hundred-foot buffer with Home Inc. We did a site walk, I think it was two weeks ago, with Conservation Commission. Out of the work we did this past year, I mean, the, the the overall amount of money that we were appropriated by town meeting in 2019 was used for this work. So essentially what we did is we had the SC group go out, they surveyed everything, we had them put stakes in the ground. So as we walked the site, you visually be able to see the boundaries for what we were doing. And it helped on the site. It let people realize, you know, not just lines on a piece of paper, but physically stakes in the ground where we're at. So we get into the land swap. So with the land swap that we're doing, it's very similar to what we were doing last year. The addition that you'll see here is the parcel on the top part of the page on, it's shown in purple as best I can see here on the screen. It's a parcel along School Street. What that does is the parcel in the middle that is green, what we're doing is unifying all these parcels of conservation land into kind of one larger parcel. Similarly, along Randolph Ave, there's a roughly a six-acre parcel that is bounded on either side by conservation land. Our goal is to turn the entire 23 acres into conservation land. If you have a chance, you can walk the site up there. You can pull over at Randolph Ave and walk right up. You cross the brook and you can see the entire parcel's upland, very nice and dry. At the top of it, this is a similar view that you see here. So as a summary, we have about 10 acres going into Article 97, and we have about seven acres coming out. The ratio between the two is actually greater than what our, what our proposal was last year. Now, there'll be a talk, the Article 97 work deals with park and conservation land. What I asked you to do now is focus strictly on conservation land. The lands that we're talking about here on the corner of Canton and Highland Ave, they're covered under Article 97, so we can't include them in the swap. However, they're not owned by the Conservation Commission. So what we're doing is we're beating these over as compensation to the, to the Conservation Commission. This one, this one parcel is roughly a little over five acres. And then the big one that's here is Pope's Pond, over 40 acres. Pope's Pond is currently owned and controlled by the Select Board. We've confirmed this. And while the longtime understanding that it was owned and controlled by the Conservation Commission is not true, we have documentation about this from a vote of town meeting from 1963. So what we're trying to do is correct everything. We found this as part of our work that we've done as part of this overall project. People, there, there are opponents that talk about this that, you know, we need to do this immediately. We are. This is going into town meeting this, this May. We are addressing it immediately. We're including this. The fact that we're the ones that founded and did this, you know, you know, we're, we're doing our best to do this. So again, when we look at this strictly on a conservation lens here, not Article 97, just conservation, what they own. For a conservation perspective, we're only taking 2.8 acres, less than three acres from conservation. Again, last year, we're taking 6.8 acres. So we're four acres less this year. In return, we're giving the Conservation Commission over 56 acres of land, much higher number than what we were doing last year. Overall, when you look at the town, this is kind of an overall map of the town. The stuff shown in yellow and gray are new conservation land that will be included to the town. And then you see our project kind of in red and blue. It's there. We have our two articles. The first article here is what we call the land swap article. I'm not sure for the Warren Committee what numbering they're gonna have. But essentially, it's a six-part article. We've done it this way because, again, it's a complex equation by what we're doing. The first two portions of the article deal with the conservation land and the parks land, basically taking it out of Article 97. The third component of this is petitioning the legislature to say we're taking these two parcels out of Article 97, and in return, part four, here are the, here are the parcels of land we're putting back into conservation. So that's on the left, parts one, two, three, and four. Part five is just the authorization for the select board to go to the state government to do that. Part six is a similar one that opponents have brought up of, you know, a reverter clause. So in that, what we asked is, we have a five-year window that we can fund a school. If the school's not funded in five years, everything goes back. So the funny part with that one is, you know, for this whole process we've been doing, everyone says everything, oh, you've rushed it, you've done this, you've done this. However, when it comes to the converter, reverter clause, they only want it for two years. They want us to rush to reverter clause. So, you know, as you hear some of this stuff, keep that in mind. It, it, it's interesting when, when you get to listen to the entire thing. The second article that we're dealing with is one that Mrs. Zulus has spoke to ad nauseam. There has been claims of a public trust. It does, you know, they're claims, there, it's not proven, there's no legal finding on this. It's a letter or a memo that lawyers that were paid to develop it, developed, and they presented it to us. So once they presented to us, there are concerns. The way to address those concerns is to use eminent domain. Eminent domain sounds very scary. However, once you think about it, it's the town taking land from the town. So technically, it's the select board taking land from the Conservation Commission. We'll be in front of the Conservation Commission and looking for their support on this. And, you know, that will weigh in, you know, as part of this. But, you know, the Conservation Commission, as part of the only 2.8 acres we're taking from them, is getting over 56 acres of conservation land. So that's kind of the compensation that we're doing. So for us, that's kind of inherently as short as I could, you know, what we're, what we're gonna be presenting at town meeting come, come May. Now open up any questions.
Thank you so much, Sean. Member White. So Sean, going back to the work walk that we had, the site walks that we had and all the different lands that are, that are being discussed for the land swap. I asked Hans, member of the Conservation Commission, to talk about the conservation land. And one of the things that he talked about, and maybe you could elaborate on, is that putting these parcels of land together actually makes it more valuable because we could apply for grants and funding so that we could clean up some of the conservation sites. Because like, I certainly noticed the one on Herrick Drive and School Street was, you know, in my view, kind of a mess. And they, and a couple of the other folks from the Conservation Commission were telling me that there's a lot of invasive species in there and that if they had some funding, they could really clean it up and make it much more valuable. So can you speak a little bit to that?
Yeah, I think the most eye-opening thing on that site walk was at the meeting afterwards when Mr. Karen, the chair of Conservation Commission, let us in on their budget, which is $2,500 per year. It's been after 30 years. So they don't have a lot of money to do stuff, so they rely heavily on those grant fundings. Yeah, I, I, you know, specifically on the Randolph Ave parcel, you know, unifying over 23 acres to become conservation land is a great thing for them. I, I, I think from resource failure, this is very second to logic. I'm starting to learn a lot of their lingo and stuff like that and how it works. But yes, you know, merging multiple parcels to create one continuous parcel and a larger footprint definitely helps them, you know, for from a species point of view and, and habitat point of view. And I think that's kind of very.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, for example, the Randolph Ave parcel that's there is roughly six acres. It could be developed. You know, there, there are 40Bs that are going on there. Part of the question that comes up sometimes from other people, it's, it's a very valid question, why are you gonna build a school there? And I'll, I'll take a minute to address that. There are ledge issues there that a 40B developer that's gonna make millions and millions of dollars on a 40B development can absorb that type of cost. For us trying to build a school, most economically, we, that's a risk I don't want to take. We see it from the animal shelter, which is right down the street. Their costs have gone through the roof trying to dig a foundation. They can't do it. So there's been a number of things there. They're building a tiny little building in that same area. We're building a very big school at a six-acre site.
And also just one more thing, going back to when we, you know, I've been on the school building committee since it's inception, inception. And going back to when we met with former town administrator John Cronin and former town planner Bill Clark. They talked about the, the rock and the ledge there in terms of making it a really difficult site to anticipate doing any building on.
It is. And I, I, I only elaborate on it because it came up with the Warren Committee as an option. And if my response in that, I was asking brief, so just, you know, I referenced ledge and stuff like that. Can it be built on? Yes. If you have some money, you can make money on the end of it. Like, if we can make money as a school, yeah, let's dig, let's go. But when I, when, when I'm building a school to make money, like, it's not, you know, 50, 60, 80 units or 100 units. I don't know how many you put up there of residential development that they're in there for a profit. We're in there to make a school at the least cost as possible for the town. So knowing that, we don't want to build on ledge, it's just too expensive. So and that, and I will resign before I put kids on Randolph Ave. I'm not doing it.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Warwick?
I can ask another one. Just go ahead, go ahead.
Um. I don't think I really have any questions. I feel like it, I, you know, have, you've given us several presents. I feel like, you know, you've given us several presentations over the past couple of years. Each time, I'm very impressed with how methodical and sort of thorough you are in your approach to the work. Each time you presented, it feels like even more of a good idea to pursue this. I appreciated, obviously, your helping us remember sort of last year's option as compared to this year's option to understand how clearly it has improved this from last year to this year in terms of the cost benefit to the town. And in the meantime, I appreciate your having shared new visuals of the overcrowding situation. You know, those of us who have kids in elementary school, I do, are well aware of it day in, day out. I think it's important that others in town who may not have that direct lived experience are helped like to understand what that is that's going on. And, you know, there are a lot of other pictures you could have included. You could go 10 slides of pictures. There's the Glover Teacher Copier Lounge in the entryway to the gym. You know, there's plenty of other really unacceptable situations that are just very urgent. So I guess I'm just really counting on a couple of things. Town meeting members being informed and informing themselves and listening to the information that you are sharing tonight. I know there are upcoming opportunities for people to learn about that. So I'm really, you know, expecting that town meeting members will pay close attention to that so they understand that cost benefit analysis, which is so clear. I also am really hoping that parents of Milton Public School students are going to, as busy as we all are. Trust me, I know, like there's a lot going on. But we also need to really be engaged as well because it's just, there's nothing more important. And you framed it through the academic excellence. That's the appropriate lens. And I just am so grateful to you for like sticking with this. And, you know, appreciate your ongoing work on it. And especially in this lead up to town meeting, which we all know is pretty high stakes decision point for the town. So thank you very much.
And just to touch on to the, on top of the graphics, we have applied a video of everything. And I mean, that shows everything, this is from over a year ago. It's just not the first since then. I encourage everybody to show their video and share their video and just know it has not been used.
So I'm just wondering, Sean, if you could speak to what's at stake here? I mean, I'd echo everything, you know, that folks have said in terms of the wonderful work that you've done, thorough work. I admire sort of, you know, the diligence which you have, you know, approached this project and the urgency with which you have done that. Can you speak to what's at stake? You know, shouldn't we not be able to move forward in terms of timing? What are we looking at in terms of how long before, you know, we end up addressing the overcrowding issue that we already have? And like you said, situation has only gotten worse, but should we not be able to move ahead? What's at stake here?
Kind of a fourth in the road. If it passes, we'll be, you know, we have a third article that's there for funding. And we're looking essentially for funding to, you know, I'm going to say the money that passed, it's going to pass. And that's my full confidence in it. That once it does, we'll hire architects, engineers, start looking, site. We'll work with our neighbors, we'll develop more detailed plans. Everything we're going to be showing leading up to there are conceptual plans that we need input from our neighbors. But if it doesn't pass, it's tough because essentially it's a reset button. We have digested the DRA study from 2019. We scrubbed it. We actually pivoted from it because their recommendation was in elementary school, we're saying middle school. So they give, you know, in my mind, credibility to us that we just didn't hate what they told us and run with it. We took it, digested it, worked it, and then came up with a better solution. If that's not good enough for the town, then yeah, it's a reset button. We're hiring consultants, they're going to replicate the work that we did. They're going to look at the available land in the town, same one we've done for two and a half years looking for land. People, you know, are concerned that we just rushed this. We were formed in 2019, we talked about land in 2020, a little over two years after. It wasn't rushed, we looked through everything, we did RS. And then, yeah, this is kind of where we came from. It's a difficult decision, but if it was convenient, we would have found it in 2019, it would have been done. So my concern with it is if it doesn't pass, it's a reset button. It took us four years to kind of get to where we are now. My guess is that we hire consultants at a very high rate. It's going to be expensive four to five-year reset button that we're doing. And, you know, during that time, enrollment's still going to grow, 40V projects are going to come on. Kids are going to be in trailers and that's for the town.
Let's see, a member of our geese has her hand up.
Thank you so much. Sean, thank you so much for this presentation. I appreciate very much what you have shared with us and the amount of work that you have put in. You know, and seeing your presentations kind of evolve and all the different things that you have done and researched and kind of looked at has been, has been great and it's been very informative. I do have a couple of questions.
Anna, excuse me.
Oh.
I'm sorry, we're having trouble hearing you. If you can just bear with us while we work on the volume in the room so we can hear you. Sorry. You want to try it now, see if we can hear you?
Yep, can you hear me?
A little bit better.
A little better. Okay. Well, I just, I just started off, I don't know how much you missed, but I, just Sean, I want to thank you for all the work that you have done and all the presentations you have made to us and everywhere else. And I am very grateful for, you know, your dedication to this and the hours you have spent. I appreciate all of that. And I wanted to ask a couple of questions. I think it's great that we are putting a lot of, offering a lot of land going into conservation and kind of connecting some of those like separate pieces and creating more of an ecosystem that's larger. And I think that's phenomenal. I do have a couple of questions. And one is, how does, I know you've made some adjustments with Home Inc. in terms of all the things that they've asked, like how has, what has your feedback been from talking to the Pine Tree neighborhood? And then any neighborhood that kind of gets in and around where like Blue Hills Parkway is? And also, also where Canton Ave is as well? Like how does that, what has the feedback been about like increasing traffic, so on and so forth? I know those lights and those streets can get really backed up during rush hour in the mornings and afternoons.
Yep. So just to touch on your questions. You know, for Home Inc., one of my goals is, once we have the conceptual drawings done this week, I'd like to go over and meet with them and sit down with these conceptual drawings to get their input of what they want to see where. When we met with them over a year ago, when we first started looking at the site, they provided us a list of concerns. And I want to make sure those lists of concerns are still valid and address them. So we've been working with Home Inc. for over two years. I personally went up last year with a member of Rosemarin. And we did a three-hour Q and A, standing there, taking any questions unscripted and answered any and every one of them as best we could. In regards to Blue Hills Parkway and the neighbors that are along there, they were the ones that asked for 150 feet last year out Blue Hills Parkway to remain. We've given them 300. 300, double what they asked last year. In regards to Pine Tree Brook, we have a neighborhood meeting with them tomorrow night to listen to their concerns. You know, I know there are concerns that for like, but we've ignored them, we haven't, we're well aware of that. But the concessions that we've made up to this point, 300 feet for Blue Hills Parkway and the 100 feet for our Home Inc., those are visual impacts that people have asked for us. The impacts that Pine Tree Brook is talking about are environmental impacts mainly due to stormwater run. Mass General Law does not allow us to create a project that's going to worsen everything there. So we need to work with engineers as we get more budget, hopefully after this town meeting, and develop those things. But essentially by law, the Conservation Commission won't issue a building permit to us if we make it worse. So, you know, the reality is we can't. The final issue in regards to traffic, if you go back and look at our minutes, we actually interviewed a gentleman from BHP Engineering that all he does is school building, traffic studies of impacts to communities. His name is Vinod Calakiri. We went through, you know, utilizing our professional references, mine personally, to leverage these people to get us, you know, consulting services on the cheap because we don't have a lot of money. We were about to pull the trigger and have him start doing conceptual studies on that. We had to shift that money to address the concerns of people, which is kind of what you're seeing with this revised article. So if I had money, I would have already done it. But if you listen to the Warren Committee the other night, my budgetary kind of breakdown, traffic analysis is in there. So all those things we brought up, we either have addressed currently or we are going to be addressing very shortly after we're funded.
Great, I do have one more comment. I did notice that you included the per pupil spending slide. And as much as I appreciate that, I do have to say, having, I don't, can you hear me still?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You know, I grew up with my parents in a two-bedroom apartment with four siblings. They didn't stop parenting because they ran out of space, you know, that's how we grew up. And I just, I don't know, like I love everything you've shared, but that one slide, I do have an issue with that argument, which is we have to spend more in order to educate our kids. And I just, I just have a hard time with that because that's like saying, I can't parent until I have a bedroom for each of my kids. And, you know, it's our job as parents to parent our kids and do whatever it takes for them. And to kind of put that out there and to say, we have to put in all this money to give them academics or great, you know, schooling, the basic necessities is just a, it's just a hard pill for me to swallow as a parent. I do, I'm out and about a lot, I hear from a lot of families. You know, I talk to them, there are so many people that are concerned about layoffs and things. It's just, it's just not, I don't know if it's a good statement to say, like, I don't find it, like, I don't know. I just have trouble with that one. So I don't know if there's a way to like, you know, maybe we can show rankings, like, you know, hey, you know, towns that have invested all this money also show something. What is the return on investment? And it can't just be, you know, education, like, you know, so that would be my only suggestion after seeing this. But everything else I think looks really good and we'll see how it goes. Thank you so much.
Just in response to that comment too, you know, we were using that essentially for reference data to look at either surrounding towns to us with Canton, Westwood, or ones that we know are academically performing higher than us, Brookline, Newton and stuff for comparison purposes. You know, the term educational excellence was kind of a hot topic when I listened to meetings last year. I bring it up only because again, we're addressing space for school building today. The funding component of it, as I mentioned, is the school community one. But we coupled the both of them together. You know, educational excellence, I don't think there's anybody in the town that will disagree, but that's not a stated goal for everyone there. When you couple these two things together, it doesn't, you're not going to get there. And we need to address both.
Is it okay if I add one comment to build on what you just shared? So, member of our geese, I just want to say, I don't know where to look, so I'm looking at you, but I think I'm through this camera. I appreciate what you've shared. That's valid and, you know, thank you for sharing that. I think it's a really important perspective. I also want to share sort of related, but I think perhaps slightly different perspective on what you just shared, Sean, as far as your thinking in including that data. I mean, when we think about and are concerned about return on investment as a town in terms of how we invest in our schools, the data you're sharing, which comes from the Department of Education, shows that 75% of towns are spending more per student than we are. And I'm pretty sure based on the conversations I have around town that it would not be acceptable to us if 75% of towns and schools did better than we did, which is not true. It's not the case. So we are actually achieving a high return on our investments considering the fact that we are not ranked, you know, at the top of the bottom quartile of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So given that, you know, I think it is relevant and important information when we want to compare ourselves to towns that spend far more per student. We have to kind of do that all the way around, not just, you know, compare ourselves to other towns like in an unfavorable way, like we'll look at how much better they're doing on X or Y. How much, you know, better are they also doing in paying for their education? So I just appreciate that you should take all the feedback you hear from us, the other boards that you present to, and certainly make your own calls. But for what it's worth, I think, you know, it is important to have this conversation in context because we do have high standards for ourselves as a school district. And that should include, you know, trying to avoid being in the bottom quartile on any measure, whether it's academic achievement, obviously, or per pupil spending. Thank you.
I just, I just want to share, and it's nice to have Tony Chikalo and Bill Ritchie here, who were so active in the last school building project, you know. I remember the condition of our schools before we began the school building project, that they were just in not great shape, they were overcrowded. And psychologically, I think it had an impact on our teaching staff, our faculty and our students to be in those spaces. And I remember vividly, like it was yesterday, the feeling of when we walked into the new spaces and we walked into those new schools and the kids saw, you know, all of the new equipment, the musical instruments, the theater at the high school. I mean, there were so many things about the buildings that just lifted everybody up. Not even people who were against the school building project, who voted against it years ago. When we opened up the new schools, I got to tell you, the pride that we had across town was just unbelievable. And now when I've gone back into the school buildings recently and seen the overcrowding up close, and I mean, my kids are grown, I know you guys are living it every day. I was sort of like dumbfounded to say, oh my goodness, it feels like the old days in some ways. So I think it's going to be so good for our town to be able to build a new project and really alleviate the overcrowding that we're dealing with. So the teachers can have their music classroom back, their art classrooms back. The kids can have their gymnasiums back. The cafeterias can have enough space for everyone to have lunch together and not eat at 10:30 in the morning. I mean, I just think it's going to be so good for the town to invest in this so that everybody can benefit though, the whole system. And I do think that, just like back 25 years ago, that the pride that this town is going to feel in this new building and its impact on the entire system is going to be terrific. So keep it up, Sean, I know it's so hard, but I'm so. keep it up, Sean. I know it's so hard, but I, I, I'm so, um, you know, I know how hard you've worked and, you know, I want you to hang in there and we got to keep going because it's so important.
Thank you. Remember Miranda?
Yeah, no, I think, uh, you know, member, uh, member White just said it. I think what is at stake is uh, the quality, right? The quality of our education that we've been able to sustain despite the challenges with space. But the more we overcrowd our schools, the more we're going to have, we're going to see, right, the need for larger class sizes because we need to fit the kids somewhere. Um, we sort of run the risk of kids not being able to concentrate and focus because there's multiple things happening in one large space. That becomes a challenge. Kids sitting on the floor, I think we would, we can do better than that, right? We can do a heck of a lot better and we should hold ourselves to that. And I think about, you know, my third grader, who I think one of our favorite rooms in, at Cunningham is the art room. Uh, she is a creative soul. And so anything that's, you know, spikes her creativity, she loves. And, uh, I think just now about, maybe about three months ago, she was like, are we going to lose our art room? And I'm like, hopefully not. But I really, I said that with such trepidation because I couldn't guarantee her that that's the case. And as you were talking about what's at stake, I was like, oh, she's going to probably graduate high school before we even figure it out if we don't act on something now. Um, so I think it's the quality. It's what we're so proud of in this town that is at stake. And I know we all care about, you know, being, being a great town, a fantastic town to live. It's why I'm here. And, uh, I, I think we need to, we need to show up for our kids and we need to do better, um, because they deserve it.
So just one comment on that. Member White's, you know, commentary that this is an investment. It is, it's not an expense. I think, you know, I mean, as, as this project moves forward, whether now or in the future, this is an investment, not an expense to the town. The other portion that comes in too is, you know, if this project does get delayed, the reason everything's been in such good shape. Yeah.
Yeah.
He's retiring. So the next person that comes on, it's a heavy job for him to take over a number of overcrowded facilities, schools mainly. And as you see, things happen. Pikes Burst, you have to relocate a classroom over the course of a weekend. Where do you create that space? I mean, and somebody with his institutional knowledge, um, you know, as he retires, I do have your cell phone number.
I do too.
You know, going forward and trying to address those things on the fly. I mean, you have principals, teachers acting as space planners and architects right now. Every inch of every space of every school is converted. It's done. I mean, trailers are the next option. And my concern with trailers is security. Uh, we see every day on the news, there are active shooters that happen. So are we, how do we extend that security boundary in the schools that are there? We all know you have to ring a bell to get in. That's one door. You have to ring another bell. If you put a trailer out the back, are we securing those? That's a hard question we're going to ask. And we create a boundary. You know, there, there are these things that happen. And, you know, I don't think that's the look that Milton wants to have of, you know, perimeter fences around all our schools just so we can accommodate trailers. And these are things that I, I, you know, I, you know, people hear the term trailers, uh, at the Warren Committee last week. People mentioned that they were in trailers when they were kids and, you know, it was good for them, so it's good for our kids. That's what I hear. Um, you know, we used to smoke on planes. We used to put lead in the gasoline of our get out of cars, you know, all these things we used to do, we don't do anymore. You know what I mean? Because we realize it's not the right thing. Educationally, to go backwards makes zero sense. Um, but if that's, you know, that's the will, that's going to be the will of the town come this town meeting. Whether, you know, they vote for a new school or they vote against it.
Thank you, Sean, uh, for coming tonight and, um, a- along the lines of, of, you know, what's coming up at town meeting. Um, I'd like to, um, show our support for the school building committee and, and um, your efforts. And I would like to entertain a motion uh, to support the school building committee and to approve the town meeting articles for land swap and eminent domain.
Um, I'll make that motion.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And I will second that motion. It's my pleasure too, since I've been serving with you from two thousand nineteen.
Very good. Um, all those in favor?
I'm going to abstain only because I didn't get a chance to read those articles prior to the meeting. So, um, I would just like to look over them. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Can you? I think, I think we need to do, we need to do a, a roll call vote as well. But I, I think, I think member of our geese was saying that she would, would like to abstain. Um, but why don't we, why don't we do the roll call vote just to be sure that we're all on the record? Um, uh, uh, member Miranda?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Chair Rosemarin?
Yes.
Member Vargis, can we hear you?
Um, I'm going to abstain. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you so much, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
agenda here.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have the policy subcommittee.
Okay, that's Carol. Thank you. Um. So, um, I apologize. I don't have my computer with me. Um, but I know that for the policy report this evening, we are, um, the policy subcommittee met yesterday. Um, and we approved to bring two first readings to the committee this evening. Um, so the first one, um, we received a policy ID certified therapy animals. Um, this is actually a new policy that has been proposed. Um, our director of nursing, Kim Coughlin, um, brought this policy before the policy subcommittee. Essentially, uh, we have not had a policy in place on the matter of certified therapy animals, um, which are different from, um, certified service animals. And so, um, it, the beginning of the sort of uh, piece of the policy here lays out that difference. Um, so therapy animals, as it says here, are also sometimes referred to as, um, comfort or social emotional assistance animal, animals. Um, and service animals as defined by law, um, state and federal law are not, um, relevant to this particular policy. Um, uh, Kim Coughlin attended our meeting yesterday by phone and explained to us um, that she has seen a growing need to implement a policy on this topic. Um, because she is the one who, um, receives requests sort of on an ad hoc basis whenever there is, um, somebody who wants to bring a therapy animal, uh, which is most often a dog, um, into a school building. Um, and so, uh, she, she just explained that, um, she felt there was a need at this point. These requests have grown in number to the point that we should have a uniform policy um, that dictates how these requests are handled. So she went about, um, drafting this policy by, um, checking other surrounding districts that have in place a certified therapy animals policy. Um, she mentioned specifically Boston Public Schools, um, had a thorough policy which she used to inform that they brought. Um, you'll also see that in addition to the general policy, uh, which, you know, explains, um, sort of how and when, um, uh, someone may request to bring a, a certified therapy animal into school. Um, she also lays out a procedure for, um, sort of how the policy will be implemented. Um, and I think, um, it's fair to say that, uh, the policy subcommittee yesterday, um, you know, we had a few questions for her that she clarified. Um, but it was a good discussion and we all agreed that it seems to make sense to adopt this policy. Actually, Dr. Miranda, uh, because Chair Rosemarin joined the policy uh, meeting yesterday, you're the only person who hasn't had the opportunity to discuss this policy yet. Um, I will point out that, um, Chair Rosemarin, I think, did identify one typo in this version of the policy. So this is a first reading. I can just point that out. Um, I'm sorry, if you, um, scroll down, um, the typo, um, which is not, um,
Number eight.
It's, yeah, it's on number eight, um, right here. Andler shall not borrow money or personal items. So addressing, um, conflict of interest there. Um, but this, um, policy and procedure seems rather thorough. Um, I don't know if, uh, member of our geese or uh, member White, if you have any additional comments based on the discussion that we had yesterday about this policy? Or Dr. Miranda, if you have any questions?
I have no questions at this time.
Okay, so this is just a first reading. So, um, oh, sorry, member of our geese, do you have a question or comment?
Oh, no, I was just agreeing. I thought it was, I thought it was well-written and, and Kim was very good about answering all our questions. So I thought getting that clarification was great. Thanks.
Great. Um, thanks. So, um, so because it's just a first reading, we don't need to vote to approve it at this time. We will, um, bring it back at our next meeting. So if there are additional questions, uh, that come up, we have another opportunity to address them. Um, but if everyone is okay with, with that, we can move on to the next first reading. Um, which is the, um, copy that was attached for us titled redlined for three fourteen twenty-three. Um, this is policy G B E A, um, which is our staff conflict of interest, um, staff, staff ethics policy. Um, so in, um, bringing this policy up for discussion, we, um, actually realized that, um, M A S C, the Mass Association of School Committees, um, in fact, has a model policy on this, um, topic. Uh, the Milton Public Schools Policy G B E A was last updated in twenty nineteen. Um, M A S C created this model policy in twenty twenty-two. Um, so, um, this policy you'll see is, um, sort of formatted and, um, worded differently, more clearly than our existing policy G B E A. Uh, when M A S C, just as a reminder, um, when they or put forward model policies, which they do on any number of topics, we've recently updated our fiscal policies um, to align to their models that are, um, which they present as sort of the gold standard of that policy in, within Massachusetts. Um, this is a, another new example of an updated policy they have presented, um, which is updated according to state law and also, uh, is trying to be as clear and concise as possible. Um, you'll see the one part that is redlined here. This was our discussion yesterday. Um, was to go a little bit further, um, in updating this policy. The policy subcommittee's recommendation was to, um, bring for a first reading to the school committee, um, and adopting the M A S C model policy on conflict of interest that we see. Um, and making one additional change to the M A S C version, which is to, um, further define, um, immediate family, this term, um, which is in quotation marks. Um, you see it in the final paragraph of the policy. Um, and what we decided yesterday, um, was to, um, define immediate family as including those persons who are specified in the definition under Mass General Law, um, chapter two sixty-eight A, section one, as well as any other person residing in the same household as the employee. Um, so that includes spouse, um, children, siblings, um, as well as any other person residing in the same household as the employee would be our update. Um, and this language was checked with our, um, attorney, Joe Emerson. He reviewed that um, and has sort of approved of this addition to policy. Um, so, uh, with that, I'll open up to any comments or questions.
And you said immediate family. Right? It's defined under M G L chapter twenty-six eight. Just wondering, I, I'm not familiar with sort of what that definition is.
Yeah. So, um, that definition, let's see, I have it right here. Um, it is the s- in, um, the employee's spouse, parents, children and/or siblings. And so what we are proposing to do is, um, say that in addition um, to those people, um, would be, um, another person, um, such as a live-in partner, say, who may not be a legal spouse, um, who's residing in the same household.
But they would have to be residing within the household. But it would not sort of address any concerns of conflict with a partner that is not residing in your home. That, is that right?
Um, yes, I mean, that's, that's, you're raising a good question. Um, I mean, I think maybe there's a way to, um, address that within our policy. Uh, that's probably not within immediate, like the definition of immediate family. Um, but you know, I, I don't know if we want to kind of look at addressing that elsewhere in the policy, um, just not under this definition per se.
So what you're thinking about, Selena, is like, um, partners who maybe don't live together, but are, are, are in a relationship.
Right, correct. So I, I'd be concerned with that, right? Because for various reasons, you could have two individuals who decide that they're not going to, you know, they're not ready to live together. But there is a, to me, an inherent conflict.
Okay, um, thank you for raising that. Any other points or questions in response to Dr. Miranda's point or on other, um, pieces of this?
Well, I, I, I appreciate Dr. Miranda's point. I just wonder about how, how blurry that can become, um, in terms of what's, what constitutes a relationship and, and that, that type of thing, you know, it means one thing if you're married or living in the same house, but, you know, and, and that's the part that feels a, a little unclear and maybe challenging for us legally. Um, no, I think, I think this language from Joe Emerson is clear, but if, if we want to explore um, some alternative language, we should do that with him before our second reading and think about if there are any other ways to address this that, that, um, are sort of clear.
Yeah, I would like for us to, to be able to just explore that, you know, there's a way of extending just to make sure that inherent conflicts are are, um, reported, you know, in, in a way that makes sense.
So I will, um, bring that back to Mr. Emerson um, and have that discussion with him and. and have that discussion with him. And it will, yes, it will fall under our ability to continue sort of looking at this at our next meeting. I know he'll get, be able to get back to us quickly. So for the second reading, I will, you know, depending on what he says, I can perhaps bring one aversion with you know, slight edit there to respond to the point that you raised. So I will do that and we will have these on our agenda at the next meeting. So. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Carol. Next on our agenda, we have Finance Subcommittee.
Okay, and we have two warrants tonight to approve. The first one is warrant number thirty-four dated March ninth in the amount of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. And then the second warrant is dated on March twenty-third. And that's in the amount of six hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty cents. Could I have a second on those?
Second.
Okay, and we'll do a roll call vote. So, Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Chair Rosemarin?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. And last night, the Warrant Committee voted to support the school's budget, and that was the budget that included the additional positions that were part of the town administrator's consensus budget. And so that was voted on last night. And I want to especially thank Glenn Pavelcheck for all of his work over the last several weeks. He responded in writing to about a hundred questions that the Warrant Committee presented to us. And he also went last Thursday and met with the Subcommittee of the the school Subcommittee of the Warrant Committee. He met with them for two hours last Thursday. And then yesterday, some of us joined him with Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent to, for two hours to discuss more questions. And, you know, Glenn also attended in person with Amy Dexter to, to be there last night for any more questions that came up during their discussion and debate. And they were there at eleven-thirty last night. So I really thank Glenn and Amy for all of their availability to help with the process. Because, you know, the budget is is large and it's complicated. And they did a really good job explaining things. So I want to thank them personally for all of their hard work.
And I add, he's there tonight too, which is why he's not at this meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and that's the end of the finance report. Anyone has any comments or questions?
Great. Thank you, Member White. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes.
Yeah. Are we, I think it got in between, so Bill Ritchie and Sean O'Rourke, Citizen Speak. Can we just make sure that nobody online is?
Oh, oh, my goodness. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I, you're right.
There's no one here.
There's no one here in the room. And I, and then we had Mr. Chikalo speak for us. So let's just see if there's anyone online who has their hand raised. We can recognize them. I see names. If anyone who's joining us remotely would like to speak, please let us know. Raise your hand and we'll promote you. I do not see anyone. But thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you very much. Sorry about that. I just get, getting a little mixed up here. So, yeah, so let's go back to the approval of the minutes. And these are minutes from March first, two thousand twenty-three. And would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of March first, two thousand twenty-three?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. May I have a second, please?
Second?
Great, thank you. And we'll do
Sorry, I, I just wanted to say, I did, I did notice in the minutes that there was a part towards the end that didn't had asked a question that wasn't included, but I didn't know if, how that works, if I needed to like amend the minutes, like how does that work? Sorry.
Yeah, let's, let's do it now. If you can let us know where, where it is. And if, if, if it's something we can't fix tonight, we'll just put it off next meeting. Where is it, Anna?
Oh, it was towards the end. I think it was after Claire at the very end, right before Citizen Speak. I, I just had a question about, I think it was in reference to Slides five and eight, where the numbers of students that were categorized under the specific learning disabilities, the numbers we're raising. And I was just had a question about how they were forecasting to make sure that they had enough staff to support the, the increase for students.
Okay. It sounds bigger than, than we can just make a change.
Yes, so just let me know how to.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure how that works.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'll get back to Maureen Kennedy, who takes our minutes. And ask her to amend that. And, and I'm glad you brought it up because I was not at that meeting and, and didn't know.
And in the recording, it's about at like the fifty-six minute mark, if that makes it easier for her.
Ah, okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. You even know the minute mark. That's impressive. Okay, so we'll put off the approval of the minutes until we can get that amendment completed. Next on our agenda, agenda is next meeting agenda items. I don't have anything right now for next meeting. I don't know if the Strategic Planning Committee are you meeting between now and?
Our next meeting is April. When is the next meeting?
The next meeting, I think, is April twelfth.
Oh. Two days after that.
Oh, after that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So never mind.
So we will have Health and Wellness. So April twelfth is our next meeting?
Yes.
So is that also your last reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have a Facilities meeting.
Facilities?
To report, because you're going to meet before my last meeting.
Right.
And the second reading of
Thank you, yes. Second reading of policies. Thank you. Okay. Okidok. So let me just So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn from open session and enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Milton Educators Association Units BND and for the approval of minutes and not to return to open session and adjourn directly from executive session. Have a second? Good. We'll take a roll call vote. Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
And Chair Rosemarin, yes. Very good. So we'll see you on our Google link shortly.
Great. Thank you so much.
Good night, guys. Thank you.